... gets a new, more pedestrian-friendly look. City leaders calling for a change in policy to allow gay men to donate blood. And utility boxes in One Harbor community get a sprucing up. These stories in City Beat. Councilman Jose Wezar helps celebrate the completion of Phase 1 of the Broadway Streetscape Master Plan, which includes reducing a traffic lane to create larger pedestrian space along the historic Broadway corridor in downtown L.A. The plan is part of the councilman's revitalization initiative called Bringing Back Broadway.
We wanted to extend the sidewalks, put more trees and planters and tables and chairs and umbrellas so people could really feel like they're in a plaza-type environment. We took four lanes, now we have three lanes. It is the largest road diet in the history of the city of L.A.
This phase is referred to as a dress rehearsal since temporary materials such as oversized planters will be replaced with permanent building materials later on. The new pedestrian plaza will span 10 city blocks in the heart of downtown. Councilmembers Mitch O'Farrell and Mike Fawnin have introduced a resolution calling for an end to the federal policy that prohibits gay men from donating blood at donation drives, adding Los Angeles to the list of major cities to take a position on the controversial federal policy. The resolution has the support of the American Red Cross and the Los Angeles LGBT Center. The current federal Food and Drug Administration policy was first established in 1983 when the FDA had no way of testing blood or plasma for HIV. But the American Medical Association, which also opposes the decades-long ban, says the FDA policy is not based on sound science. Instead, it recommends that each donor be evaluated on an individual basis. First, the utility boxes in Boyle Heights got their makeover. Now, the ones in Wilmington are also getting a similar treatment. Councilman Joe Buscagno participated in a bike ride through Wilmington on a recent Saturday, during which the newly painted utility art boxes were unveiled.
We're taking ownership through art of our utility art project. There's one right here.
The walk-and-ride, led by the group I Heart Wilmington, made its way down Avalon Boulevard, finishing at Banning Park, where hundreds then enjoyed the return of the Wilmington family picnic. It's known as El Grito de Dolores, that cry by Mexican peasants that called for freedom from their Spanish conquerors. Now centuries later, not only Mexicans, but Angelenos celebrate that victory call. Anna Marcos takes us to the steps of City Hall for the party.
With that shout and a ringing of the bell, L.A. kicked off its El Grito celebration. The Mexican holiday celebrated by Latinos and Angelenos honors Mexico's independence from Spain more than 200 years ago. But El Grito also means different things to different people.
I think it means like a yell of celebration for independence.
Well, El Grito was an opportunity for Los Angeles to celebrate its rich heritage, like myself, son of Mexican immigrants.
It's great to celebrate the independence of Mexico here in the city of Los Angeles. After all, we have the second-most Mexicans, only second to Mexico City.
We all can relate to the struggles for liberation.
The mariachis sang and strutted their stuff. The audience danced and waved flags. And what's a Latin celebration without the crowning of a queen or two? But while Mexicans may have won their independence, here in the U.S., many Latinos face a different kind of struggle. For Councilmember Gil Sadio, it's all about lobbying for immigration reform.
There's new issues and new struggles that are part of this tradition. Today, we're concerned about driver's license for immigrants, and the city's doing a great job in creating the infrastructure to prepare people to be licensed, tested, and insured. We have an open heart and open arms for the young people who are at the border. We are concerned about their constitutional rights.
For Latinos, the end of one struggle celebrated even as another kicks into high gear. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
In this week's list of things to do, a walk at the Silver Lake Reservoir, a celebration of cultural diversity at the zoo, and Noah's Ark. The Los Angeles Department of Water and Power is inviting you to join L.A. DWP officials for an informative 3.5-mile walk around the Silver Lake Ivanhoe Reservoir complex on Saturday, September 27th, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. The event will highlight the history of the facility, L.A. DWP's watered infrastructure, and the importance of water quality and water conservation in Los Angeles. Park on the street and enter at the gate located across from 2141 West Silver Lake Drive. Wear sturdy closed-toe shoes, hats, sunscreen, and bring water bottles and snacks. No bikes allowed. And to protect water quality, no dogs or other animals are allowed on the reservoir perimeter. The Los Angeles Zoo will be hosting a Hispanic Heritage Celebration on Saturday and Sunday, September 27th and 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on both days. The event will celebrate Central and South America by highlighting the diversity of cultures and animals that hail from those regions. Activities include crafts, live musical performances, and of course, the animals themselves entertaining visitors. The event is free with paid zoo admission or zoo membership. The zoo is located at 5333 Zoo Drive. Go to lazoo.org. And if you haven't taken your child to the Skirball Noah's Ark Permanent Exhibit, run, don't walk. The exhibit, five years in the making and occupying an 8,000-square-foot gallery, is inspired by the ancient flood story, which has parallels in diverse cultures around the world. Kids and adults can climb and explore the exhibit, help construct the ark, and mingle with hundreds of handcrafted animals made from recycled materials. This one-of-a-kind new destination invites visitors of all generations to have fun while learning the value of community. The Skirball Cultural Center is located at 2701 North Sepulveda Boulevard. Go to skirball.org for ticket information and other details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.
Welcome to Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, September 23rd, 2014. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingfeld, Bonn, Buscagno, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Wezar, Carras, Corian, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson. Ten members present in a corner. Mr. President.
Oh, thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Okay. We ask that Mr. Carras moves, Mr. Corian seconds.
Next is Commissioner's resolutions for approval.
Okay. Councilmember O'Farrell moves, and Price seconds. Next item, please.
Mr. President, say yes Tuesday, and now be the time for the flag salute.
Okay. If everybody can please rise for the flag salute. Please rise for the flag salute. We're going to actually ask Patrice R. Clark to lead us in the flag salute today. Keeping you on your toes. Thank you very much. You lead these meetings. It's fair you lead us in our nation's salute as well. Thank you very much. Members, if I could direct your attention to the agenda. Madam Clerk, let's run through the agenda, please.
Item 1 is an item known as for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that Items 1E, G, and J may be received and filed as much as the liens have been paid. Also, the department reports that the lien amounts for Items 1B and I should be reduced to $2,088.75 and $2,430.56, respectively.
Okay, those items will be before us then. Do we have cards?
Yes, cards on Item 1.
Cards on Item 1. Okay, we'll go ahead and hold that for cards then. Any specials on those?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Buscagno.
Item 10, Mr. President.
I'm sorry?
Item 10, please.
Okay. We'll hold that when we get to it, but we're not there yet.
I'm sorry, I saw 1 through 10 on the screen here.
All good. All right, so on Items 1, nothing there. Okay. But we'll go ahead and when we get to that item. Okay, so we've got cards on that. Next item, please.
Items 2 through 17 are items which public hearings have been held.
I think Mr. Buscagno, if I'm a mind reader, would like to hold Item 10. Okay, so we'll go ahead, hold Item 10. Mr. O'Farrell.
Three special for Parks, please.
You said for cards or for you?
For Parks.
Oh, for Parks. I'm sorry. Yes, okay, we'll go ahead and do that. Any other items special, members? Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those existing items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, those items are approved. Next items.
Items 18 through 32 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order. Any cards?
Cards on Items 18, 19, 20, 21, 23, 25, 28, and 29.
Any specials, members? Seeing none, we'll open the roll on the balance of those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay. Next items.
Items 33 and 34 are closed-session items. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, Mr. Labange.
31 and 32, forthwith.
31 and 32, forthwith, without objection. That'll be the order. Thank you, Mr. Labange. 33 and 34, I'm going to look to, I believe, Corian on those items. Mr. Corian, are those... If you can address those, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Both 33 and 34 are recommendations for settlement, budget and finance. Approved of the recommendations of the city attorney, and those matters could be resolved in open session unless members have questions or concerns that we need to discuss. The recommendation would be to approve the city attorney's recommendation.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, anybody wish to hold either one of those items? If not, we'll go ahead and take those items before us now. Mr. City Attorney, do you need to read anything additional to the record? Are we good? We're good. Yes, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, for Item 33, the recommendation would be to adopt the recommendations of the city attorney. And for Item 34, the recommendation is to pay a total of $465,000 in settlement in the case entitled Grant Dwyer versus Oganis Morandian et al.
Yes. Mr. Labange. We'll go ahead and... Can we vote on these, or do you have a question first on these particular ones? We'll go ahead and open the roll. These items, 33 and 34, for settlements. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Okay, Mr. Labange, did you have a question? We're good. Okay, next items, please.
On the supplemental agenda, Item 35 is an item known as for public hearing.
Okay, do we have cards on that?
No cards.
No cards. And, members, do we have any special on that? Seeing 1, yes.
Yes, Item 35, special for Councilmember Parks, please.
Next item.
Items 36 and 37 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, do we have specials on 36 or 37, members? Mr. Buscagno.
36, please.
36.
It's a big lease with the port.
You're in favor of it? There are no cards? Still want to speak on it?
Yeah.
Good to go. We're called it special. For Mr. Buscagno, okay, 37 is before us. Seeing no members on the queue, we'll open the roll on 37. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That item is approved. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item 38 is an item which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, those are considered without objection. Would you like us to actually open the roll on the consideration? We're good to go. And on 38, then, do we have cards?
No cards.
No cards. And any members calling that item special? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll on 38. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That item is approved. Okay, Madam Clerk, where does that take us?
Mr. President, that takes council to presentations or items called special.
Okay, I've got a presentation. If I can ask Mr. Labange to take the seat for one minute, please.
Let me call on Councilmember Mitch Englander for a very special presentation.
This is all you, brother. It's one of the hardest presentations I've had to give, actually, since I've been in office, colleagues. Today, we are honoring a very special CD12 employee. David. David began as an intern, actually, in my office in early 2013. And during his time as an intern, he completed his Bachelor's of Arts from Cal State University Northridge in urban studies and planning. His work, his ethical attitude, his upbeat spirit quickly made him a CD12 favorite. And always willing to work, no matter what task, what the hour, what the job, what the function, it didn't matter. He actually came as an intern and then earned himself a part-time job, and then he was quickly promoted to a full-time position on our communications team. We found his talents. While on staff, David has become truly invaluable. He began the E video program, which some of you have seen in our newsletter, where he goes and highlights businesses of the month, things we're working on in the community and various nonprofits. He's done all that on his own. Most recently, he designed our new ARC GIS map, where the first office of any department, city, council office in the history of the city to actually have an interactive GIS mapping program on our website, which is incredible. And he's done all this on his own. His extraordinary service goes far beyond our office. In 2010, David joined the United States Army Reserves, currently serving on the 315th Engineering Company. He serves as an accomplished engineer and holds a Level 2 translator status in Tagalog. This summer, David received a call from our country to serve abroad. David answered the call with enthusiasm, and he's shipping out in December for Kuwait. In this business, we usually and often refer to our reservists, our first responders, and particularly those that serve overseas as our heroes. He's giving up a lot to do what he has a passion for and fighting for and protecting our country. He's a superhero. Yes, deserves a round of applause. His mom, Rosanna, is here, joining us as well today. And I got to tell you, so when David came to tell me that he was shipping out in December to Kuwait to fight for our country, I said, "You know, we have more than just a legal obligation to hold your position here. We have a moral and ethical one to do so, and your position and our family will always be here for you. And you will always have this opportunity at any time to come back with open arms, and we welcome you back and safe travels." And he said, "Well, I don't want you to hold my position here because I don't know when I'll be back, and it wouldn't be fair to your office or the city, and I want you to be able to replace me or hire somebody." Nobody will ever be able to replace you, David. He said, "I'd rather give my resignation and go serve my country and put everything I can into the fight for freedom." It's rare when you come across somebody like David. He's always got a smile on his face. Maybe not right now. There he goes. He's always willing to do anything for anyone, to help anybody at any time. And he's been truly an inspiration to get to know, to call a friend, to call a member of our CD12 family. And now he's going to fight for us and our country. I couldn't be more proud and more honored to work alongside a superhero amongst us. Say God bless you. God bless America. God bless you, David, for everything you've done. We're not going to miss you because you're in our hearts, and we're going to think about you every day. And we welcome you back at any time, and we wish you safe travels. And thank you for protecting us. So, thank you all.
Well, thank you very much. Mr. Englander and the 12th District staff, David, thank you.
So, on behalf of all of us, we want to say thank you. Godspeed. All right. Want to say a few words? Yes, come on.
It's a little weird being on this side. I'm typically taking photos, and I'm pretty sure I bumped into you guys multiple times by accident. I'd like to thank the councilmen for even letting me have a shot here, especially also to John Lee and Stephanie. They... It's been surreal being able to work here for the city, coming from a guy who didn't really have much, but now I have this family. So, thank you. Thank you.
Well, one more thing. Introduce that someone special who just hugged you.
This is my mom. This is Rosanna, so...
God bless you, Mom. Good job there, David. Another big hand for David right there, and all his work. And as the 12th District staff goes to the press room in the back, Mr. Buscagno, you have a special introduction, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. If I may, Channel 35, direct your attention, Mr. Nazar El-Sahed, our Director of Street Services, is here alongside a delegation from Egypt. Nine members from the Egyptian Military Engineering Departments here to discuss our pavement preservation program. We welcome you on behalf of the city of Los Angeles. I know you're about to kick off your meetings, and we hope the knowledge that you've experienced here, that you've gained here, you bring it to your country to make your country a better place to live, work, and visit. So, welcome to the city of Los Angeles, and we welcome you with open arms. Thank you, Mr. El-Sahed, for bringing them to chambers. Thank you.
Mr. Buscagno, give him a big hand. And special love back to Giza. Giza's our sister city. Anybody from Giza? Raise your hand. You're the new chairman. Good job. Okay. Okay, good job. Thank you very much. Giza, Giza.
And Mr. Bonin wants to know what high school they attended in Egypt.
That's right, Giza High. You got it. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Patrice, let's take up item thirty-six. Very important issue to the port. We want to have a great port staff get him back there. Mr. Buscagno, item thirty-six. Madam Clerk, wait a second.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Yes, for item thirty-six, the Trade Commerce and Tourism Report has been circulated.
Super. So, it's before us, Mr. Buscagno.
Yes, if I can call Mr. Soroka to the table on this item. If this is, reflects good things to come, and with Mr. Soroka as the new director of our port, the port's going to go in the right direction. I understand this is a lease agreement that's been, been taking shape the last couple of years, and within the three-month period since you've been in office directing the port, we have come to an agreement with APMT. Mr. Trombley's here, the Managing Director, who has joined us. Just give us a quick snapshot of, of the agreement. I believe they're going to be here till 2017, as, and then the next steps as we, we continue to keep APM here in our port, ensure that we are the number-one container port in the country. So, give us a quick snapshot of the, the lease agreement.
Thank you, Councilmember. We have reached agreement with our largest customer at the Port of Los Angeles, APMT Terminals LLC. They represent more than 3 million TEUs of throughput at our port, are our number-one customer, and 20% of our revenue. Through some great negotiations with Mr. Trombley and his colleagues, we have reached agreement that was subsequently passed by the Harbor Commission and reviewed by the TCT for approval this morning and is in front of council today.
Very good. Colleagues, thank you very much. I asked for an i-vote here, moving this forward. I want to recognize Commissioner Dave Arian, who gets it, who knows the importance of growing our port, growing it green, and holding the port accountable to ensuring that we create jobs, sustain jobs, and knowing that this is America's port, it's a regional asset. And, yeah, he is all right, Mr. Bonin, right? And then lastly, I know this is not on the agenda, on the item, on today's agenda, but I want to thank you, Mr. Soroka, Gene, you and your staff, for being responsive to the fire at our Port of Los Angeles, and want to just acknowledge the hard work of the men and women, the Fire Department, the Port Police, the huge Unified Command Post, multi-agency effort, and Chief Shirazis, who's continued to brief me on, on the situation there. They've all been there since last night. So, thank you. Colleagues, ask for an i-vote, move this forward, and continue to, to bring these jobs for our ports. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
All right, no speakers on the queue. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, over the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Fourth with, please.
Fourth with on that. Get back to the harbor. And Mr. Buscagno, Mr. Wesson wants you down in the harbor as soon as possible as well to answer that. Thank you, Harbor Department. Thank you very much. Next item.
Item number one, call special for cards.
John Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or go to JWalshConfidential, or tweeting @HollywoodDems. This is item one concerning nuisance abatement. As I said, you do a very, very good job of abating these nuisances. Occasionally, you get the wrong people, but you didn't get the wrong people in my case. These are fines, which, these are liens, two and a half thousand dollars, $2,158. This is very good, and I hope you take all this money that you're getting in liens and pay for the enormous damage done to our port by faulty safety. Fire safety at the port is disgustingly bad. HollywoodHighlands.org, our port is burning down.
Mr. Barnes, Rodney Barnes.
Yes, my name is Rodney Barnes. Property address 6306 Second Avenue. I'm part of Mr. Parks District. I'm sort of ill-prepared to speak today because I thought that Mr. Parks and Building and Safety and myself were supposed to come to some type of mutual agreement. However, I have some citations issued to me on my property that I'm not sure of actually the legitimacy of the citations. Anyhow, these citations originated at like $433 and has escalated to $2,327. That's like 534% increase on a fine. And I, I find that somewhat preposterous, how someone could just charge you interest and penalties and go so far. I've received hard money loans for building construction. I've had high interest rate credit cards, and none of them have put forward these type of interests and penalties. And I just feel like it's unfair and unjust by me being a citizen and a taxpayer. I would think that the city would be there to help me and protect me and not try to run me over the codes, per se. And I just feel like this is not fair. The money is, is too high, and, you know, for a citizen, it's just, it's just not right. And I don't see how the city can impose these type of fines and penalties. Pretty much that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Herman? Sorry, hold on one second. Mr. Parks, please.
Yes, I would just like to comment on, this is the address of 6306 South Second Avenue. I think at the last meeting or one previous, we've spoken to the individual that was at the podium and made some effort to reduce the, our discussions, to reduce the, some of the fines and fees and interest. But it was clear in that discussion that he thought he should pay nothing, and I think that's where this issue is today. And so, we've asked Building and Safety to sit down with him and try to come up with a resolution, but he, we've not gotten the greatest cooperation. So, we're going to ask Building and Safety to comment on that at this time.
My name is Charles Kalibal. I represent the Department of Building and Safety. The property owner, Mr. Rodney Barnes, has an auto-related business, which was inspected in 2009 and 2010. But, and Mr. Rodney Barnes was, was invoiced, but he failed to pay the inspection charges. In fact, he didn't agree with any of the charges and any of the violations. He hasn't complied with any of the violations as, as well. And after talking to the inspectors from the Department of Building and Safety, they insist that this lien is, is accurate, it's good, and it should be confirmed as is. We didn't agree on reducing the, the amount at all, and the department suggests that the lien of $2,327.91 be confirmed as is. The lien consists of the following breakdown. It has a non-compliance fee of $100. It has a late charge of $1,090. It has a code violation investigation fee of $336. Surcharge of $20. Another surcharge, late fee of $50, and interest of $683. That comes to $2,327.91, and the department proposes that the amount should be confirmed as is.
Okay, Mr. Parks.
You know, maybe we could just ask for one more week, and maybe the complainant and Building and Safety can have one more meeting before we finalize this. But they've made a great deal of effort, and yet we've not gotten cooperation. So, we give it one more week, and the next time, we'll go through with what they recommend.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and hold that item for one more week on that particular matter?
And that's item 1K?
1K, correct.
Continue to September 30th.
All right, Mr. Herman.
I did sign up for item one, and all of you in Los Angeles, well-known and have heard that Mr. Englander in CD-12 has one...
If you want to stay on the particular...
I'm on topic.
Okay.
Batman. Three, four, West Community Court, $6,000 lien. North Advocate Avenue, $400 lien. North Verrill Avenue, $3,700 lien. And the very first one in item A, $626. Did you not hear what the African-American gentleman just got through saying? Due process. You did, he's not denying not to pay. He's questioning the interest you're charging him on the illegal lien. So, again, Batman is correct. Mr. Englander has one, two, three, four liens against people's properties, and this is disgraceful. All of you deserve what you get.
Okay, so we've got that item before us. Seeing no other cards, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next items, please.
Mr. President, there's requests to continue items 20 and 23 to September 30th, and also there's requests to send item 26 forthwith.
Okay, that'll be the order without objection.
Next is item three, called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks. Okay, he's okay on that? We'll go ahead and open the roll on item three. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you very much. Next items.
Item 10, called special by Councilmember Buscagno.
Okay, Mr. Buscagno.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, I just need to amend this item, colleagues, to reflect the following. Amend item 10 to instruct the CAO with assistance from the CLA, GSD, EWD, and any other departments as necessary to report with the information requested. Innovation Technology and General Services report, Council File 14-0473. And this is in our ongoing efforts to revitalize Watts, where we identified a number of properties that are owned by the City of Los Angeles. So, I ask for an i-vote, and moving this forward. Thank you.
Okay.
And approve as amended.
Okay, and seconded?
Second. Can I get a second?
Second by...
Thank you, Mr. Bonin.
Mr. Bonin, thank you very much. And so with those amendments, that item is before us. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, and we're going to go ahead and take the following items together for cards, 19, 21, and 29. 19, 21, and 29. Mr. Walsh, we've got cards from you on, let me see here, 19, 21, and 29.
You also have cards from me on items 25 and 28. I don't think the LA City Council Ferry has stolen them, if you pardon the expression. Number 19, this is REAP. We have gone over that before. You do a good job on REAP. Number 21, John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, at JWalshConfidential, or @HollywoodDems. This is the Venice Canal's pipeline replacement. The Venice Canal gets priority on pipeline replacement because it's tourists. If you live in a black neighborhood, they don't give a damn. I'm saying about a pipe replacement. I'm standing right now in front of an all-white jury, and there's nothing. No greater insult than a white man can give a black man than to call him white. No greater insult, and for them to accept it as truth. Number 25. See, I was black in a previous life. I didn't do a good job. I was sentenced to be white this life. I'm trying to get to be black in my next reincarnation. Fifteen council districts detailing job and employment data. You're going to hire somebody to do this damn thing? We know who the port, which ones are the poor districts, and we know which ones are the rich districts, and we don't need job and employment data. You just thought of this after 200 years or 100 years, the City of Los Angeles? This is a bright idea? You should have done this years ago. And you did do it years ago, and now you want to do it again. Number 28. Information leading to the, of those responsible for the murder of Daryl Gatewood. Anybody else? You've seen my T-shirt that I bought on Hollywood Boulevard. You can see it on my website. It says, "Stitches, snitches get stitches." And there's a straight razor with blood dripping off it. That's the blood from the throat, whoever snitches. These, again and again, Mr. Krikorian can correct me, you've only awarded one reward in the past 20 years. Now, he can get up and destroy my credit. Mr. Walsh, actually, we've given away 12 or 13. I, Mr. Krikorian, say it. Kiss my backside. He's not going to say that because it's true. This is a waste of time, as long as the gangs can kill anybody they want to and get away with it. This is automa, this is my favorite, automated litter bins. That's what we really need in the city. Someone find, the DEA doesn't tell the cops, comes in downtown to Skid Row and finds a half a billion, finds $58 million sitting there on a table. What do we need? Automated litter bins. What, what do you need an automated litter bin for? Just throw the, the crap away. And street furniture? The street furniture is falling apart. The City of Los Angeles doesn't need any more street furniture. HollywoodHighlands.org, JWalshConfidential, @HollywoodDems. Stay tuned. I will be presenting, and come to the website now. I will be presenting some enormous details on shocking conduct by one city council member who's an alcoholic during the public comment. HollywoodHighlands.org.
All right, and we'll go ahead and, since you did speak also on 28, we'll go ahead and add 28 to the mix, and go ahead and ask Mr. Herman to speak on 28 and 29.
Mr. Speaker, it wasn't an incident, but I did fill out my card as Nazi Mr. Kramer. But let's talk about item 28. Relative offer/reward for information leading to the identification, apprehension, and convictions of persons who were murdered. Back about a week ago, we heard on the incidents under item 41, Tyree Rowe. We heard under item 39, Clarence Born. Under item 36, Luis Vasquez. Under item 35, Raymond Estrada. And today, I'm speaking about Daryl Gatewood, a bicyclist who was murdered not by hit and run, but murdered in the City of Los Angeles. As Batman speaks to you regarding the murder, his homicide report by the Newton Division on the 54th block of South Central Los Angeles was no importance to this city council. Because, again, Mr. Gatewood is dead, but yet the offer of a reward is only a small token of your appreciation for the life and death. Snitches get stitches. Snitches get stitches. As long as you continue to offer reward, snitches get stitches. And I'm not snitching on anyone other than this city council, whose bad intentions for public safety is obvious. We've become the hit-and-run capital, and I'm sorry to say now, the murder capital of Los Angeles. My condolences to Daryl Gatewood, 27-year-old bicyclist, and your companion. My compassion to you, says I, Batman. And yes, in addition to that, let's talk about the automated litter bins for Council District 14. When today, all of you are witnesses to the trash on the streets of Los Angeles, almost any day, anywhere, and specifically in Council District 14, for our streets are filled with varnits, past... pests, rodents, insects, cucarachas, as Mr. Weezer is well aware about. And what about all the targeted debris of trash? Mattresses, broken furniture. When do you ever decide to pick up the crap from the streets of, of our beautiful city? And yet, we want to target tourism to come and see our chinchero? Our third-world country, the City of Los Angeles? The City of Nazis, I call it, because of concentration camps look just as bad as today's streets, Mr. Speaker. And so I did sign the card up as Nazi Kramer. As a slap to your face for the homeless situation to remove their belongings, calling it trash. Let's use discretion when cleaning up our streets. When we decide to put automated litter bins for a small fee of $20,000, 590 chump change. Clean the streets of Los Angeles now. Do your damn job for the public and with public interest. For all of you know that Batman's intentions are good for all of you. As I sat in the meeting this morning at 8:30, when Joe Buscagno was late to discuss Item 36 for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and really appreciate your comments. Donna, if you want to come up on 28?
Shows you that murder is happening out on the streets. The gun owners need to be able to arm themselves, to protect themselves and their loved ones. So lift the gun ban with proper background check, and let us protect ourselves, especially against ICE's members who come out here. This shows we really need to be able to have, able to protect ourselves and be able to go, have classes to learn how to protect ourselves. Because we don't need murmurs on the street. Snitches Get Stitches, I don't trust doing that either. So I trust, I believe John Walsh when he says, "Snitches Get Stitches." And I just wanted to say real fast, automated litter bins? Because I forgot to put that in. We don't need that. Bring back video conferencing. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other cards on Items 19, 21, 28, and 29. Again, colleagues, 19, 21, 28, and 29. We'll open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Great, thank you so much. So with that, actually, let's go ahead and we've got some items that were called special. Number 35 by Mr. Parks, did we? That's still on the board. He's not ready yet. Is he ready, Mr. Parks? Did you, you had a question on Item 30, 35A?
Oh, yes.
And I, we have a card on 35 as well, if you want to hear that first.
Okay, let's hear the card.
Okay, you got it. All right. Mr. Hall. Or, I'm sorry, is it Myra Hall? Mrs. Hall. Apologize. Just looked at the first name, or last name first.
Okay, first of all, I would like to say that I truly appreciate our Council District 8 getting involved and their assistance in bringing this matter to a fair issue. And that I also hope that in the future, perhaps, a building and safety department can just implement asking the tenants at the residence, when they go out for an inspection, for the owner's information. Because that could avoid, actually, the lack of contacting the owners. So I'd like to say thank you to our Council District for reducing this lien to a fair amount.
Motion on Item 35. And as the Speaker mentioned, these requests went directly to the property. And the property was being inhabited by a tenant. The tenant did not have great relationships with the owner, and so they did not pass on the information. So it caused the non-compliance fees to escalate, the late charges to escalate, the, also the accumulated fees to escalate. We're going to reduce this because it's been verified that the owners of the property never received any of the notices. And so, we will move that the original cost of $6,555.99 be reduced to $356, which is the original inspection fee.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, looking for a second. We got a second from Mr. Blumenfield, and we'll go ahead with that amendment. Open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Great, thank you so much. That item moves forward. We'll go ahead and take, actually, Item 18, because we have a Commissioner up. And it was asked that we take 18 by Mr. Parks.
Yes. Mr. Schaefer, would you come up? Colleagues, this is a reappointment, and we waved it through committee. Mr. Schaefer has been here before, but I think it's important because of his position with neighborhood councils, that we have him give a little overview of some of his historical knowledge of neighborhood councils and where he sees and hopes they're going in the future. So, Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. I've actually been involved with neighborhood councils since before they began. Going to some seminars at USC, at Davidson Center. Watching them grow. Becoming active with my own neighborhood council in 2003. Helping form a citywide coalition, the LANK. Being an active member in the Valley Alliance. And then having the pleasure of being appointed to the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners by then-Mayor Villarosa. And again, having the pleasure of being reappointed, if each of you see fit to approve that, by Mayor Garcetti. I think that neighborhood councils are maturing, they're growing. The associations are becoming better organized. I think that the city departments are beginning to recognize that neighborhood councils are actually members of the city family to be worked with as opposed to being ignored. We do have some great relationships with some of the departments and other commissions. So in my mind, I see neighborhood councils moving forward, becoming more influential.
I'm going to ask, hold on, somebody, whoever's dancing in the aisle, please. We don't ask, we ask for to keep at least some decorum. And keep the aisles clear. Thank you. Please continue.
Thank you. I would cite, one of the best examples is our budget advocates. The Charter says that the neighborhood councils are supposed to advise the mayor with regard to the budget. And I've seen that grow, I've seen it mature, and I've seen that process become very important. And I'm very pleased to say that the mayor and this council now take heed of the recommendations of the neighborhood council budget advocates. So all in all, I see us growing, I see our influence gaining, and I see us becoming an integral part, a more integral part of the city family of the City of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much. Mr. Blumenfield does have a statement or a question? Comment?
Yeah, I want to comment on this guy coming up before us. We're going to ask him a lot of questions. I'm actually kidding, because I've known Mr. Schaefer for many, many years. And he is really a fantastic public servant, a volunteer public servant now for many years as with the DA and county as a paid public servant. But someone who has been involved in the neighborhood councils in my district. He was one of the founders of the Tarzana Property Association 30 years ago. More than that, he tells me, and has been active in that regard. Was active with the neighborhood council. Current with the Tarzana President of the Tarzana Neighborhood Council. And this has been a commission that he takes very seriously and really makes a difference with the, not just in my area and within Tarzana, but really has, has gone citywide and uses his talents. And I'm glad to see his wife Toby is here with him today. You know, we're grateful for all you do and the fact that you guys are a wonderful team. So I just wanted to stand up, you know, we've worked together on many years, whether it's the ham radio stuff that we did, and your passion for that, but, but the bottom line is, I want my colleagues to know that this is a real public servant and a volunteer public servant right now who gives his all, and I strongly urge his renomination. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Seeing one more speaker, Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to lend my voice of support to Mr. Schaefer as well. Both when I was Chair of Educational Neighborhoods, I had great opportunity to work with him as one of our premier leaders of the neighborhood council movement in Los Angeles. And in my current role, dealing with him as co-chair of the Budget Advocates has been a great joy. He's a terrifically reasoned leader who will, you know, bring a great deal of expertise to our continuing efforts, both to bring fiscal stability to the city and also to bring continuing, increasing empowerment to our communities. So I strongly support his renomination.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll, seeing no other. Open the roll, close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Congratulations. Mr. Parks.
1K reconsidered, because I think we have an agreement that we can resolve it today.
Oh, terrific. Okay, so 1K will reconsider that item. So we'll open the roll for reconsideration and close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Fourteen eyes.
I'd like to, on 1K, make a motion that after consideration of building and safety, that the $2,327.91 lien be reduced to $554.56. And that we prove this today so that the lien processing go forward.
Okay, so that's a motion on the floor. Mr. Labonge, seconds. We'll go ahead and open the roll on that item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. It's nice to resolve those. Okay, and we actually only have one more item, so we can actually finish the regular agenda. We only have one more item. So we have, and we only have one card on that item. Ms. Akala, if you can please come up on Item 25.
I'm really sorry that I was late and missed the the items dealing with real estate liens, illegal liens and all that, you know, because the city is only taking revenue from the people. And that's ridiculous. Since the government prints the money, why do you have to bother the people? What is, what, isn't that a stupid game we're playing? It is a stupid game we're playing. And we don't need that game. We came to this world to enjoy life. We didn't come here to suffer and to be beleaguered by city hall. Every city hall in the world. I'm glad Englander is busy reading something, that way he's not.
Mr. President, he should direct his comments on Item 25.
Direct the comments directly to the item, please, at hand. Thank you.
You noticed? I'm not really speaking on the item.
Okay, then, thank you so much. Okay, so if you don't want to speak on the item, then you can come back with another item.
Englander, relative to an economic study of the city's 15 council districts, detailing job and employment data. What the hell is that? How much are you going to spend on that? And whose pocket is that money going to go into? Hello? It's not going to be the people. You're going to be taking the money from the people to do another stupid study. Well, the whole city is full of unemployment, full of homeless people. You don't need to do a study for that. You are just wasting the people's money once again. You derelicts.
All right, we'll go ahead and open the roll on that item, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
All right. Madam Clerk, where does that take us?
Mr. President, a special one motion has been circulated.
Okay, let's go ahead and take that item up then.
Councilmember Labonge will speak to the findings.
Okay, and we have no cards, so public.
The findings of this on a visit to this particular site. It's a dirt road that goes out on a T-intersection next to about a 90-degree slide down to Laurel Canyon. It's unsafe, I believe. As you know, I don't do 245s often. That the Board of Public Works made a mistake, so I ask, please take it under consideration. I ask for an eye vote.
Okay, so that'll be a vote for consideration and please open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, that item is going to be under consideration now then, and there are no cards, so.
I just wanted to recognize the community. I got, they didn't fill out the cards, because they're counting on their councilmen. If you'd be rise. It's all the community came down today to voice their concerns. In this effort here, they say you're going to pave the road. Thank you very much. Be seated. Pave the road, and you go out, and it is an absolute dead end. Detective Sergeant Harry Eto'o will know very well, working the Hollywood area, how tough these streets are. When I got to the end of the street, Mr. President, it was a Sunday morning, I said over 25 Hail Marys backing my car out. There was no turnaround. There's no turnaround. The Board of Public Works approved this. We need to rescind it, and then send it back to them and work to find a better resolution. I ask for an eye vote.
So now, now the 245 to
245.
To accept jurisdiction now is before us, so we can go ahead and open the roll on that item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Good. Now the veto.
Yes, so now we'll go ahead and open the roll on the veto of the item. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
You got it.
Lastly, that's it. I want to thank you, I want to thank my deputy Renee White, sir. Thank you.
For those for those members of the public that are here, what you just saw is incredibly rare. And that's a council member standing up for their district, is, not, not that that's rare, but actually usurping authority and overturning a ruling to protect the community. And I want to thank Mr. Labonge for his leadership and the community coming down for that as well. Thank you. And Renee, as well, for leading that effort. Thank you. Okay, so that, let's, we're going to go ahead also and reconsider 1D for continuation. So we'll go ahead and open the roll on 1D for reconsideration. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
And we're going to continue that for one, for two weeks, two weeks till October 7th. Two weeks until October 7th. D, one as in David. One D as in David. Okay, great. Thank you so much. So that'll be the order without objection. General public comment cards. We'll figure out the timing on this in one second. Okay, so going through this with the getting advice. We do have, wanted to let everybody know, we have 15 minutes scheduled for general public comment. That is on the agenda as the council rules. But we have many more cards than that timeframe. And so we want to make sure that we have an opportunity to go to 15 and cut it off and submit those cards. Or we can go ahead and go to 1 minute, but we want to get everybody in and give them an opportunity to speak. I'd rather give people an opportunity that showed up and took the time out of their day to come down here for general public comment and, and speak to those. So if we could, put a minute on the clock and give everybody an opportunity, I think is more fair, quite frankly. So if we could ask Al Sabo, followed by Donna, followed by Herman, followed by John Walsh. Good morning.
Good morning, Council. My name is Al Sabo. I live in Councilman Weezer's 14th District. I was here downtown this past week at Councilman Weezer's press-op opportunity, trying to say what he's going to do to Pershing Square. Well, 12 years ago, Pershing Square saved my life, and I'm here to save Pershing Square from the ill-thought, ill-conceived plan. plan put forth last week by Jose Weezer. The plan actually will eliminate 60% of the seating that currently exists in the park, eliminate 70% of the shade trees, the few that are remaining in the park, and yet they write praise upon the park manager, who is a racist and a bigot, who has done nothing to actually serve the people of the city of Los Angeles when she took out the restrooms, the water...
Great, thank you, thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Sir, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, just so there's no misinformation out there. There is no plan for Pershing Square. We are embarking in a visioning process so that the community can give their input on how they would like to see Pershing Square renewed. So, there is no plan yet, sir, and we could talk to you over here afterwards.
We'll talk on the side of the room. Thank you very much. Donna, sir, you've got to please allow the other speakers to be able to approach the podium. Thank you very much. Thank you, Sergeants.
Okay, we need to reopen Van Nuys video conferencing so people in the valley can speak. It's good to see help with airstrikes from the Arab Conferences, but it's little too, too little too late. I ask people to call the White House and use all we have at our disposal, including special operations, boots on the ground to help guide airstrikes. Don't dismantle ISIS. We need to destroy them. We need, we need nut troops in Africa. We need our troops in the Middle East. Obama is holding us back. In my opinion, he should be impeached. We need someone with military experience, know someone with diplomacy. He's, Obama's too weak. We don't, he doesn't represent American blacks. We need to have better black Americans like Congressman Allen, who's Colonel in military, Kalan Powell, who has military expense, and Montell Williams, who we get that wrongly imprisoned, that Marine Tomoos from jail. I want to say real fast that Turkey is not our friend. It won't let's use our field.
Thank you so much, Mr. Herman. Thank you. Thank you, Donna. Wait, before...
We heard it all.
Hold your time, hold your time. Hold on a second. I'm gonna give you back your time. Shh, I'm gonna give you back your time. Reset his time for a minute. All right. Wanted to make sure you heard. Come on up. Did you watch Gotham last night?
All broken pipes in the city, with our infrastructure destroying itself within itself, and your stupid comment, Mr. Big Ears. Let me remind you, this is general public comment, you dumbass, and I am gonna speak out...
Watch it. So, you've got to address, address the entire council as a whole, or I'll take all your time.
...to disrupt the speaker. It only proves a point that the idiot that interrupts a public speaker is violating my First Amendment right under the Constitution 54950 to 54963, dumb but ignorant rule of yours to follow, right? So, back on topic.
Again, address all the members.
Again, we do not have Mr. Weezer's attention because the gentleman was correct. You cut the damn trees when we need the shade. You don't clean our streets because you'd rather put $20,000 of bins named Dean Diaz for CD14, and even better, Gloria Molina, again, November. Woo-dee-hoo!
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Mr. Walsh, how are you today? John?
Great as, great as always, HollywoodHighlands.org, Chairman of the Independence for Gloria Molina. Sure, she's meaner, but vote for Molina anyway, anybody but Weezer. Okay, I want to come to the defense of Chief Parks. The vile racist sexist LA Times has written a vicious article about you. They lied to you, and they tried to get you to say things, and what did they say? No one pays attention to him. I pay a lot of attention to him. They wouldn't say that if it wasn't for the color of your skin. And I'm telling you that Austin Butner, I can't even say the things that Austin Butner said off the record about black people. He hates black people, and he hates Parks, and he hates any black person, and all the white people that work for him gang up on Parks. And remember, when they gang up on you, vile vicious Butner...
Thank you very much. Olga Hall, followed by Gwen Scott, followed by Robert Lucas, followed by Michael Bonner, followed by Carl Williams. Good morning.
Good morning. In 2007, Councilmember Jose Weezer, along with the O3 CEO, John Gray, announced that they had come to an agreement to save the Southwest Museum, and they had formed a Blue Ribbon Committee, the Southwest Society, to seek funds for the Southwest Museum. Jackie Otry and ex-mayor Villarigosa were present at the time. This was behind closed doors. The community and the friends of the Southwest Museum were excluded. Guards were at the gate checking the names of the guests. The Southwest Society was used as a political arm to give credence to the O3's agenda and to squash the efforts of the community and the friends of the Southwest Museum. The betrayal from Councilman Weezer and ex-mayor Villarigosa is unconscionable and unethical. The agreement was a memo that had no value at all, and Councilman Weezer...
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Next item, please. Or member, public.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning. If you can use the microphone, please. Just tilt it up a little bit. There you go.
My name is Gwendolyn Scott. I spoke to you guys like a couple months ago. I reside here in Los Angeles City or the County for about 10 years, and I have observed everything that's been going on with the drug activity. The homelessness is beginning to be where we are afraid to walk down the streets on Fifth, San Julian at the park, Gladys Park, San Pedro, a lot of homelessness, San Julian streets. We smelling urine, feces, something need to be did about it. This has been going on for 10 years. It's getting worser and worser. I seen that you guys did the drug bust over in the Fashion District of $95 million. I guess that money's gonna go to the federal government after they do all the investigation, but some of that money need to be put into Skid Row.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Robert Lucas. You know, being down, being down in the Skid Row area, let me give you a little truth. Yeah, it's all of what she just said, but there's also a lot of heartbreak and a lot of sorrow. When you interact with the homeless down there and some of the mentally ill, I can tell you, man, the empathy and the sorrow that you feel can be very overwhelming. I brought somebody with me today who has tried to do what needs to be done to change the situation that she's in. And because of the environment, the peer pressure, bad choices, bad timing, it's heartbreaking to watch. The facilities and the resources are there. The fact that the matter is, there's also an element there that victimizes those that are taking advantage of that. On September, I think it's the 29th, they're doing a town hall. I want to be there, and Weezer, thanks for everything.
Thank you very much.
Time started. Michael Bonner here, the Grand Wizard from the Klan. I say, let's get them goddamn niggers off Venice Beach. Don't forget free speech. I say, let's get them goddamn niggers off Venice Beach, and don't forget free speech. The Grand Wizard here of LA. Goddamn it, let's get it done.
Carl not here? Okay. Juan, followed by Brian.
Well, I know the Grand Wizard is actually a black man, which is kind of ironic to have the Ku Klux Klan being led by a black man. Isn't it ironic? Isn't it ironic that we have a bunch of morons leading society? They're called City Hall. Isn't it ironic that every, almost every decision you make is against the people instead of helping everybody? You go around screwing everybody. Huh. What an ironic situation. The whole government setup is totally out of whack. Now, we are bombing the Islamic extremists, but by the same token, we discriminate against everybody that's not racially correct around here.
Brian Barajas is next.
Hey, you called my name. I didn't hear my name.
Well, if I called your name, it called it, then I called it three times. So, Brian Barajas is next. Sir, please remove yourself from the podium. Brian Barajas is up next. Brian, you are our final speaker.
All right, I got two titles for everyone to consider right now. The first one is solving the drought starts with mankind's mastery over the solar system. And the other one is Obama is the barrier to the nation's responsibility to the world. Impeach him. Now, if anybody wants to attend this Saturday to a live event, please, I can give you the information, call 323-534-3866. I think, I think there's a problem here. LaRush has said, with Obama in office, you will have thermonuclear World War III. And obviously, the bombing in Syria by Obama is strictly illegal. This government of Syria, I don't remember him giving any consent to this government to do that. It's going to get bad.
Great, thank you very much. That concludes general public comment. Councilmembers, are there any announcements? Seeing none, are there any adjourning motions? Shh. On seeing no adjourning motions, that concludes the council. I'm sorry, we do have an adjourning motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I...
If we can ask everybody to please rise, and those in council chambers and the general public, please rise for adjourning motions. Please rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today's meeting in honor of Nancy Kikuchi. Nancy was born on July 15, 1962, in Los Angeles and was the eldest of three daughters, born to Yasuo and May Kikuchi. The family lived in Los Angeles and moved to Torrance in 1976. Nancy graduated from Torrance High School in 1980 and went to UCLA, where she earned a bachelor's degree in political science in 1984. Within weeks of graduating from UCLA, Nancy went to Kanagawa, Japan, to teach English to Japanese students in a new program that has since become known as the Japan Exchange and Teaching Program, or JET. After four years teaching in Japan, Nancy returned to the States and worked for a Japanese company called Maruko, and then as a real estate broker at Cushman &amp; Wakefield. She also earned her MBA from Pepperdine in 1994. Nancy said that she was committed to help the Japanese and Japanese-American communities here because she wanted to give back for all the generosity and hospitality shown to her by the people of Japan. And she fully dedicated her life to the commitment in 2000, when she started working at the Little Tokyo Service Center, where she became familiar with the business owners, residents, and other stakeholders in the community. Since 2000, Nancy worked, volunteered, or served as a board member for Little Tokyo Service Center, the Japanese-American Culture and Community Center, Little Tokyo Public Safety Association, Ale Tanabata Festival, Nanka etim Kenchinaki, JET Alumni Association of Southern California, the Nisei Week Foundation, Taiko Project, Ale Beat Dance Group, and the Japanese Chamber of Commerce of Southern California. Most recently, she worked as a facilities manager of Upper Crust Enterprises. In May 2012, Nancy was recognized as one of the Women of the Year by the Japanese-American Citizens League and Japanese Women's Society of Southern California. And in June 2014, just three months ago, she was honored by JACC's as a Community Spirit Award winner. Nancy was part of a very close-knit family. She credited her parents for teaching her the value of volunteering, and they credit her for being the very best daughter they could have asked for. Nancy considered her two sisters as her best friends, and they always looked up to her as their neechan. Nancy was a proud aunt of three nieces and one nephew, and each of them enjoyed a special relationship with her nana. And Nancy was a friend, helper, inspiration, leader, and confident to many, many people who loved her. Her services were held this past Saturday in Little Tokyo, and may she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Weezer. That concludes adjourning items, and we'll go ahead. Madam Clerk, we have council items for posting and referral. We'll go ahead and consider those posted and referred. That concludes the agenda. We are adjourned. Be safe.